Keep back. That can like fifty four.
So I think I kept saying there were like twenty or so on Zoom. Sharon might know that number when she gets here.
Okay. Well, the clock he just said thirty, the other one says the real this one says six twenty eight. Can we say the pledge anyways? Welcome to meeting. October sixteenth, twenty twenty five. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation, united in this system, with the raising of justice for all. So I guess we start with rule talk. Of the meeting to orders. Deputy Madison.
Kathy Madison.
Kathy Madison, Whitbread.
Right here.
Rodney Nowak.
Oh, I hear.
Dot Johnson. Kevin Drusil.
Here.
And deputy clerk, Frasier DeBusschere. Um, did I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October second, twenty twenty five special meeting? You all have those in your packet. Did everybody have time to read them? Okay. I'll make the motion.
All set.
All in favor? Reports and updates. I guess you start with me. Um, we settled the employee contract and um. That was, we opened the Teamster contract about two weeks ago or maybe three now. And we had a successful time with that. We were trying to keep the dedicated staff that actually stayed with us. And to try to hire new people. Um, we couldn't hire any new people because we didn't pay as much as McDonald's. Uh, so we had to give our own employees a raise, which I I was happy to be part of. Um, ten percent sounds like a lot. We couldn't hire those people for what they're making. So their health benefits bring it up, but it's still a pretty high cost of living these days. Uh, we will be looking at ways to reduce costs. Uh, right now we're one man shy and going to have our new guy that comes in. Uh, we also created a new civil service position for the superintendent of public works. And the Teamsters Union was really good. They um helped us take a look at it and make sure that we were in compliance with their contract and uh we were able to bring in John Woodland from SOTUS. He accepted the position last Tuesday. And he will begin working at October on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. He has six years of management in SOTUS cold storage, along with all of the hazmat programs that are there. And vehicles. He has a CDL license and he had seven years at RG&E. He developed a strong background in operations, safety and infrastructure maintenance, which we really need in SOTUS Point was what we're going to need to do with our water systems and that sort of thing. He also possesses multiple technical license and he will be pursuing his water and sewer certifications. Um, he has a lot of hands-on experience and everybody that will work with him interviewed him. And they came back and he wasn't the only applicant. We've had a lot of applicants. He was the one that stood out and he's ready for the snowplow season, so we will have enough snowplow for this this month. Um, I've attended a lot of meetings. Um, the sand dune meeting was amazing. Uh, that has come full circle. So that people are actually going to have the assistance of both the county and our village um, to keep those dunes so that they don't get too high. Kevin Drushel was a part of that and he he did a great job, as did Kevin Rooney from the county. Um, and I'm trying to think of the nice lady that took care of it.
Mary Osterman.
Mary Osterman. She's amazing too. So I've learned a lot. Uh, Sharon Lilla did a great job yesterday at the New York Forward Meeting. Um, and we will be applying for grants. Uh, she'll probably talk about that a little bit when she comes in. And I've also attended the zoning board of the field and the planning board meetings to uh get a grip on what was going. We've done some fire hydrant flushing. Uh, those of you that have noticed that they were working on Monday, the holiday, those were actually SOTUS people because we didn't have enough people yet without John. Uh, to do it, they have a flat rate contract, so we did not pay overtime. So um, we've also found some things that Kevin will be reporting on uh that we're going to need to do uh as a required of that to make sure our pressure stays higher than California's. Um, anyways, uh, our water meters and water bills, we're going to talk about that tonight. You'll see a lot of information about that. Um, during the process, our office staff actually went out and read the meters uh because we were shorthanded. Uh, during this process, a few meters were found to be broken and unreadable. We're working with each person to take care of that. And for a little humor, one of the meters was a nineteen seventy model in a home that was still working. Uh, while it's impressive, I know that's fifty five years ago because that's when I graduated from high school. So um if you believe you have an error in your account, bring it to the attention of my friend Melanie or Kevin or anybody in the office. Um, we have a docs donation proposal tonight that we're going to talk about with Brandon Martin. Um, we're just talking. Don't worry. Yes. Yeah, we're not doing anything more than that. On Tuesday, I officially resigned. Sorry, as president of Friends of Willow Park. And I accepted a new role here. And I didn't want it to be a conflict of interest because it goes deep. As one of the finest groups I've ever worked with. And they're going to lead us into good places. Um, I turned it turned it over to Josh Jerome and Gina Hilliger. It's a young group and we're very, very fortunate to have them. They're outstanding young people. And it's been a busy twenty three days. And I couldn't be more proud to serve this community. Next, um, Whip, you want to go?
Sure. So um you you covered most of the water stuff. We didn't, we did do a bunch of hydrant testing um and we're almost done with all of that stuff. Uh, they did add a new water sewer connection on Lake Road and they didn't fix a leaking water service on Lake Street Extension. There are some other things that were investigating that are suspected water leaks, but we don't know for sure yet. Um, so thanks to the SOTUS folks for that. Uh, from a sewer perspective, um, not a lot of major um stuff went on other than traditional maintenance work. We still have a little bit more work to do with some um, equipment purchases and the um Josh is actually looking at um moving, I mean, it's a minor thing, but uh adding pipe and piping the the fluid differently so that uh when he does the process, it doesn't have as much problems as it does. So that's it for sewer.
Awesome.
Pretty much it.
Okay, Matthew, you want to go?
Well, the highway department and the guys have been doing everything that they normally do. But I've been working a lot on a little part of therapy lot and I'll be explaining where I'm going.
That was great. Um, Kathy?
The ambulance total waters um is back to a one person positioned in September and they had seven calls that month uh with one of them being billable, one helping billable. Communications, it's, you know, calm down from the season a little bit. Remember our village website is sodaspoint.info. Um, that's where you can find the village information. Um, zoning board of appeals, they continue to be busy with uh, you know, work things that come before them. So they're they're even busy, even though it's slower season at the moment. Tourism, um, there's a Halloween parade is scheduled for this Sunday, the twentieth at five o'clock. More on this later at this meeting. And I just want to give a shout out to SOTUS Point. Um, fall is a beautiful time to visit the point. Um since I'm part of tourism, the fall foliage is near peak and nearly every restaurant in the village is still open. I don't know if people, I'm talking to the choir here, but preaching to the choir, but the people on Zoom and the people that that look at this later on YouTube, um, remember that our restaurants are still open. Um there are farm markets nearby. There's live music in the point. Um, gift shops are open. The Lighthouse Museum is open every three day weekend until the end of this month. Um, it's a wonderful time. Come on out. We're not just a summer season or four four seasons. It's the point. All right. That's all I have to say.
Then.
Uh, for September, I had nine building permits issued with two new uh two new reviews and then we finished up six other reviews for that month. Um, total fees generated is nine hundred and sixty five dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other reports? Moving on, uh, we'll have public comments at this time, limited to items on the agenda and announcements of upcoming events, two minutes per speaker. We'll try to do it in total of fifteen minutes. We will extend if the board agrees. Um if anyone would like to volunteer, please just state your name and beep away.
Do you want to use the room first? Want to mute that for now? Or how do you want to do it?
Uh, your call.
If you if you want, I'll keep them on mute until the room's done and that's.
Good evening, everyone. Bill Leon, seventy five, seventy three, Fifth Street. Um, I'm here to express my concern about the acknowledgement of the dedication of public property and its agenda, which I know pertains to the six fifty. Um deck that currently that's currently involved in uh New York State Government OGS case that's open. Um I'd like to remind the board of a few points before we enter this discussion. First and foremost, this deck is over water. It is unpermitted by the United States Army for they are trespassing on New York State lands. This is not an opinion or a feeling. This is a fact. This encroachment of repairing rights by neighboring property has been further substantiated by a legal survey completed um in the past week and math was produced, which I provided to the board on ten thirteen twenty five. A legal survey means it established the repairing rights and the bounds and how much the encroachment actually was, which is pretty substantial. Um, regarding the dedication, dedication seems grossly premature. How can a person or a business dedicate something that was built over an area that's not theirs? Just because the deck was built by the owners of the six fifty does not supersede the fact that an open case exists challenging where and how it was built. Additionally, as a party involved in the case and a resident of the village, I am concerned about the follow-up. Since the building of this structure in two thousand seventeen, never once was a dedication mentioned until the summer. No minutes from any any of the board's requests, any intent to dedicate anything to the village. This further appears to be a tactic or a ruse to put a positive spin on wrongdoing. Kevin has been sidestepping the objective stance and working with the palavry's to find a workaround. I'd like to read you something from the most uh recent LWRP. Which, by the way, everybody wants to cite the LW or the LWRP to justify that. The other thing that's in the LWRP is section eighty six of our Dr. Moore Code, which establishes the littoral lines and how the parcels are supposed to upset the ash from that littoral line. Um Kevin's Kevin Dressel's job is to enforce the code. In this instance, he has done everything but that. It is important for the board and the public to realize this. The six fifty deck was as it sits now, went through the proper process and submitted plans to build the thirty by seventy on the footprint. It would never have been today. That's the truth.
Thank you.
Okay. Karen Palavry, one of the owners of six fifty, I'm Matt Morrow. We also own property on South Ontario Street. Very simple, five things. We came to the village, we asked to build the deck. The village said yes. We built the deck. The village gave us the RCMO. And three years later, Mr. Leon complains. That's it.
Yeah, pretty much summed it up. Um can I use other minutes?
No, you've got minutes in your home.
Check three minute, yeah. So things like the sisters from Philly owns Facebook back in two thousand seventeen um states that this is after that was built that it's the the greatest thing to SOTUS points. They were starting to boom. So that's what he said back then. Then he buys the building, knowing that the tax there and he was glad about it. And then he hid with his attorney saying that they want to acquire twenty five feet of of our back that we paid for for lifetime use for themselves. Not sure what that means. And me, I was willing to give it and I am giving it to the village for public, so I will never give it to Leon. So I mean, it's like um
No, Stan. No.
Exortion. I call I call it extortion. Okay, because he knew that that was very, he shouldn't have, he shouldn't have purchased the building. He should have taken care of all this before he bought that building. Number three, he's got a great, a great layout with a boardwalk. That is bound to hit it in a he calls it, he calls it a sidewalk. He has a two and a half foot concrete wall, brick wall that he should have put his steel on, but his steel's in the water, but he calls that the boardwalk, two and a half foot. We have a little bit of Meister map that shows a real boardwalk for a real beautiful village.
And whether or not it would have been approved by today's standards is irrelevant. It was in two thousand second tape.
Already, okay. Thank you both.
And he bought, he bought it and that's that's the basic. And I don't really know what his.
I'll change tomorrow.
Not what you do for, but just with yours.
Is it, is it two minutes?
Yeah, two minutes.
Yeah, it is. I swear. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mark Constitutions, eighty six thirty for Grex Street. I was here last uh two weeks ago. And I did hear about the parking lot. Um, it intrigued me. I've got some history with the drainage and parking around here. And uh, so I I looked at the Barton Judas plans, which I recalled and studied them for ways to uh you know, reduce the cost. Subsequently, last night I heard in the meeting that uh you know, those plans have been put forward, uh, the Barton Judas plans, which I was thrilled about uh to hear that they were going to be built. And then I heard the price, um, which shocked me that there was a supposedly a bid that came in that is a reduced cost much lower. Um, that's what I heard at the meeting. Um, I'm concerned with that because I don't think that it could certainly be built for fifty or sixty thousand. I don't know what the number was you put forth. It'd be I think sixty five.
Correct, sixty eight thousand.
Sixty eight thousand. Um, so I guess my question would be, when you make your presentation, because we have to go ahead of you, is what isn't included from the Barton Judas plan? That plan included demolition, which is full demolition parking lot, taking out all stone, taking out all pavement, taking out everything and replacing the brandage.
Also five hundred and seventy.
And okay, let me finish, please. I have only two minutes.
Yeah.
Um, erosion and sediment control was included. Um, full depth replacement, paving, four inches of asphalt, twelve inches of stone. Um ADA compliance is a requirement, even if you just over it to put all the parking spaces in, all the sound and everything.
Okay.
And I guess the bottom line is if you're not doing this on the planet, especially if you're not rating it and you're putting in storm sewers, the storm sewers are not going to do anything because in fact, they're going to be a problem when you actually fix this parking lot and not band-aid fix it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Kathy Lucas, um, eleven fourteen. I just have a question about water meters. Um, when we got our bill this time, it showed that we had used six times more than we had ever used in the past. When I called up and questioned it, no one seemed to know why. Is it is it that the person reading the meet has not read the meters for years? Or is there some issue with just the water meters? Why is it um you said someone from the offices went around to read the meters?
Yes.
Is there a reader? Is there some way you can read the the little black plus? I mean, I don't know how this works. Do you read it on the outside?
Hey, I'll tell you what. I, your questions are valid. How about if when we get through the presentation, if we allow you to ask another one if we have one? Um, because you're coming over, you're talking about pretty much what we're going to go over.
Oh, all right. It's various of why, why this issue would happen and what the remedy is going to be.
And we we have some remedies. So, all right, and they're just getting started. Thank you.
Williamson eighty six sixty, Grex Street. Uh, one of my questions first is, was a milling machine already setting in the parking lot? At the village parking lot? How has this been approved? What hasn't been approved? Why has the milling machine already been delivered?
It 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 has not been approved.
We have to go down tonight?
We're ready to go if we approve it. We have not approved it.
So it is premature. Okay. The second question is, I had requested an analysis of the water and sewer comparative so versus hiring employees versus having an outside service. When will that report be completed and presented to the community?
That is something we're going to have to work on after we hire, after our new hiree comes in. And I believe we'll have an answer for you in a short time. I I can't promise you because I don't know if I'll be sitting in this chair or not. So um, it'll, it may fall on the next person.
Let's see. Uh, next question is uh regarding property at six fifty. Uh, there seems to be statements previously made by yourself of recusing yourself of any involvement in this property if you were to be the new mayor. Are you still going to recuse yourself from this?
I have accused myself. Kathy Madison has handled all of that, along with Matt and Kevin Drushel.
Last point is, interestingly, that when we proposed a one and a half million dollar village hall, you were in opposition and as was Phil Leon, yet in the end, he purchased the property fully knowing that this condition did exist. So here the village may be sued based upon an event that he did know. So I'm asking counsel to tell us how this can go forward if in fact he brings the bring legal action against the village.
I I can't answer that. Dave, your own session.
And you're up, Tom, Dave.
Yeah.
Why can't you?
I I advise the board. I provide legal advice. If I provide them legal advice regarding potential litigation of stone executive session, not an open session.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience? Anybody on Zoom?
They can see it now.
Yeah.
You can unmute yourself if you have a comment. Seeing no comments, we'll close the public comments. Moving on to um the Willow Park, top one, top twenty parking lot.
So we're looking to get the Willow Park parking lot fixed. I mean, it's in a terrible situation where the water has nowhere to go. Can't force it down to the base. Um, so catch basins are the way to go. Um, we got five included in the price. And everything's going on state bid. And all the workers are from our towns that was installing the catch basin and Angus and Gash will be doing that. Um, the cost for the milling and the pavement is fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. The cat basins um with the metal grates are five thousand, one eighty five. This piping that we need is two thousand, five hundred and thirty nine dollars and sixty four cents. We estimate four hundred tons of two-inch binder at thirty uh thirty two thousand. I also estimate about two hundred tons of uh, virtually two hundred tons of five H pressure, fine pressure run. The lane of white then use the level spots in the parking lot. And that's at sixteen dollars a ton at thirty two hundred dollars. I got incidentals of ten thousand dollars. And we're at sixty eight thousand bucks of this. So if it's about five hundred and seventy thousand, or we spend sixty eight thousand.
Um, the other thing is that the county is going to be.
Yeah, the county is going to assist us as well. With controls. So we do have to top it in the spring. Put a couple of top.
Is that true?
It's gonna be a little bit more of those.
How much?
Um probably twenty grand, twenty five grand.
It's again state bid, so we buy it directly from the state bid.
Yeah, we're buying everything state bid.
And we truck it ourselves, right?
So it's a cheap way to go. And we're going to get the pitch the right way and it's going to drain.
Where is the life? This, thank you, Sonny.
The life of the design?
The life, yes.
Well, we dug into the parking lot. We know there's a good base there. So we know there's already a good baser, so why rip it out? And why spend extra money? So we've we've already done that. There's only two inches of uh pavement there now. So for sixty eight grand, we got it done. That's gonna look really nice and work well.
And there will be.
What's left? I mean, there's. We'll answer to the question.
It's gonna all live up there, probably twenty years. I mean, by the time we put a top on it, I mean, that was how long? Fifteen, twenty years?
I don't know that one. I'm unable to pay on that parking lot.
Has been paid for fifteen years.
But it was never properly drained, right?
It's never properly drained.
And that's why we're here complaining that you're not going to drain it now. We're putting, why do it twice?
How can I not drain it with five catch base?
With what?
Five catch bases.
There are five reasons.
We got five.
Why is this boat in the parking lot to the grades to the drain?
It's probably gonna be two percent.
Absolutely not.
Yep.
Cannot happen. The the design.
That is a flat parking lot.
Okay, two.
Okay, let's get that done.
I got the original map right here. They only had from each, from from one end to the other, they got a foot and a half of pitch. That's all they got.
The development, when you look at the slopes, they are regrading the parking lot, sucks the water and will get to the inlets. The water is going to get to an inlet if you paint it the way it is right now, is the water drops out of the sky on the end.
Okay. Move it along. Matt? You look, you have the next part of it. Um, we need a motion on that.
Yeah, if we want to, yes.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we do the proper drainage and we take uh, we're paving in the Willow Park.
Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor? All in line. Shouldn't care.
Okay, so the village received a petition for proposed dedication from Eric and Morrow Old Anges, owners of six fifty restaurant for a portion of the deck uh over water to be dedicated for public use. At this time, all the board needs to do is acknowledge receipt of that petition. You're not approving nor denying it tonight. And declare a notice of intent to be lead agency for New York Secret Review. I did a resolution for that. And then you'll schedule a public hearing at a future time, at which time the public will be able to comment on it. And then you'll schedule a public hearing at a future time, at which time the public will be able to comment on it.
Eric, so you probably give it to her, right?
Yeah.
Yep. And this is, we're required to do this, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
We have to announce, okay.
Yeah, well, you have to do a secret review. So first you do a motion to acknowledge receipt of the application.
Okay. I guess something like that motion, uh, acknowledge receipt of the application.
Then you do. If I can.
What's our, do we have to do this in this step?
I mean, you guys could vote on the applicant, you know, now, but there, you know.
So the next step required is the secret. Is that correct?
Yeah, you have to do a secret review.
Okay, so what's the next step? Okay.
So all that you're doing right now is you're declaring for purposes of the secret review, which is the environmental review of the environmental impact of the product. Yeah, any kind of project, any kind of board action, uh, is supposed to have a secret review done. So, uh, it needs to have a lead agent. So the village board is gonna declare an intent to be lead agency for secret review. We then send out a notice that you intend to be the lead agency to the planning board, the zoning board, and various New York state agencies that may be. Have an interest in it, which they probably will say they don't. But, uh, they then have thirty days to advise if they have any objection to be a lead agency. If they don't object, then after thirty days, you declare yourself lead agency, then you actually do the secret review. Which will probably not be very complicated, but it needs to be done.
And then what happens? And then the process would be, goes to the public?
While that's going forward, you also schedule a public hearing and run at the same time. They're running on parallel tracks. Okay, and then you do the public hearing. Once the public hearing's done and the secret determination's done, then you vote on.
Then we go back to the board and depending on the thoughts, okay?
Yeah, then you give the, on the actual application.
So there's nothing here other than you following the process?
Yeah. If I can kinda go if you want, I can read through it. Secret resolution of board trustees of the Sosa Point regarding a proposed dedication for Mauro and Eric Holdings LLC, declaring intent to be lead agency. Board trustees of the Sosa Point here and after third ability as the board is considering application dated October seventh, two thousand twenty-five for Mauro and Eric Holdings LLC. Regarding A four eighty-nine Greg Street. Uh, said application proposes the dedicated ownership of a portion of the deck over water located on said property to the village. Village board determines the set actions classified as an unlisted action under part six seventeen of the state environmental quality review. Regulations and whereas the village board determines that said action is also subject to review and approval by all their involved and entrusted agencies under secret regulations. Whereas the village board determines that is the most appropriate agency to ensure the coordination of this action. Will provide written notifications to involve and entrusted agencies for the purposes of conducting a coordinated seeker. Coordinator review and making the termination of significance thereon under the secret regulations. Now therefore be resolved and village board is here by declaring its intent to be designated as lead agency for the action. Be further resolved that the village clerk is directed to provide notice here up to the involved and entrusted agency seeking their agreement. For objection thereto when writing within thirty days. The, you know, motion to, uh, adopt the resolution that I read.
If you wanted to put that on hold for till the next meeting or something?
You can.
Yeah, that's probably good because we're gonna have a bunch of potential elections that. I mean, cause this is contentious. It's gonna buzz all sorts of drama.
This is really a cheat.
Yeah, well, just, you know, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I think that'd probably be advisable and then. We take it up again next, in November.
Sure.
And if some reasonable. So we don't have my motion, we can tell you, right?
Can we ask why it would be pushed to the next meeting? Just, I mean, it's random. I, I don't understand why. Is that a legitimate question or?
I don't feel comfortable right at the moment.
Um, yeah, I mean, you guys acknowledged receipt of the petition. Um, so if you, you just wanna take any further action, so you don't need to do any motion, you just go on.
Okay, and then we do at some point have to make some action because we acknowledge this, okay?
Yep. So you guys, you can do a lot with the next, which I know.
Let's wait.
Oh, go ahead.
But we, we can vote on that next, next time around. I'm assuming we're up here, we might all be gone.
Can the board ask Phil what he wants? It's, if this is the Phil show, you guys, what does he want?
Excuse me, moving on.
You guys are such. Gave us a permit. That's why we're gonna sue you.
New business, water bills. And over a little bit of the water bills. Um, Melanie have, has some examples and some things to talk about. Kevin also has some things to share. Kevin, do you wanna?
Right, I've had a few people call, um, that have been getting estimated for a little while, so. Now that they're actually getting red, they're playing catch-up. And given that we do have a minimum of five thousand gallons that we built were charged sixty dollars each quarter. They really, we can't prove when the water was used. Was it all used in this last quarter? Perhaps, but this first one, for example, he was estimated at four hundred gallons, six hundred gallons, two hundred gallons, two hundred gallons. And then when it was red, he used eight thousand one hundred gallons. So I can't make any changes to it. I didn't know how the board wanted to adjust these that are coming up. I, I don't know what the right answer is. I will share.
How many of them are, Melanie, are there?
Right now, in fact, see, here's the other problem, um. Some of them just don't make sense. This one was estimated, um, forty-two hundred forty-two hundred forty-two hundred thirty-two hundred for the last year and then. The consumption at when it was red, put it at twenty-one thousand one hundred gallons. Whatever the board thinks is fair, I mean, we could divide it out. If they were billed for their minimum of five thousand each time, they could go back and just add another eight hundred. See how far back we go. I don't know what the right answer is. And some of them, the readings just didn't make any sense.
You're still working on it, yeah. So why don't we take this, why don't we look at? Because I know some of this was meters weren't working right, some of it was. They got estimated, some of, some of it was a transpose number, yep. So let's, let's go through this again and look at what makes sense and obviously somebody didn't consume. One, I don't know, one of these was like twenty-three thousand gallons, so just weird stuff happening. So let's go through it and try to figure it out and not make that decision for that.
Okay, yeah, I just.
Yeah, I mean, more than all of this, I don't want to break you and try to understand, we can go back and look at. Cause I mean, if they're only using two hundred dollar, two hundred gallons a week or a month or a quarter and then.
Well, that was estimated.
Some of them we know for sure estimated because there is a box that you can check. Um, some of them we don't know for sure to estimate it because the box.
And then the new meters compared to the old meters could have caused.
And we have not raised rates in how many years?
But they were billed forty-two hundred. You're saying they were sold forty-two hundred instead of four five thousand. I have a solution to check the meters. I mean, why don't we just take a five gallon hell and turn the stick along and see if the five gallons.
We're, we're gonna go back and just look at the numbers first and try to understand exactly what's going on in the math.
And then check each one.
Yep.
We've also got leak detection that we've been starting working on. Though there's some of that, it's gonna go up in a little while. Um, the, the good news is there's documentation here of numbers each time. So we do have it and we do know some of the things, um, and. We also have new meters to.
I want to ask him, we think we made a mistake and we overbuild a customer. Can we, we can make that right, correct?
Well, I'll think about this for a minute. As you overbuild them, so they overpay you. So you could refund them as it's. Yeah, or.
Or how about the other way?
The other way is more concerning because it's, you have an obligation, likely have an obligation of collecting this public money.
What if it goes back multiple years?
Yeah, same, same process, but you could, you could probably offer to let them pay in payments or something like that.
And I don't think they're huge dollars, but we still can do it.
Okay, okay, you got it.
So we'll have a decision?
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to look at it deeper.
Okay.
Okay, and then you had some.
So I have two different things. There are some options for automatic readings, right? Oh yeah, so the automatic readings, uh, I call it census because we, um, Melanie, Josh and I worked to get all the registers. So on the meter gun, um, there's two numbers. There's the meter reading and then there's the ID. And by yourself, when Nate was out reading, it's too hard to do all that by yourself.
Right.
So we all had an extra person. And this time, uh, we wrote down all those numbers, non painstakingly, we put it in the computer. So now every account has that ID. I called to find out how we can automate the gun to the computer. And, uh, what they said was if we sign up for the software, um, which the software costs four thousand dollars a year with a four percent annual increase. Um, the gun will automatically take that reading and send it to the Williamson logbook. But they will give us a demo for the next order to try it out before we sign up for anything. Uh, the other thing they told me is the little touchpads, there's actually now a radio clip-on that you can do. Better, I, I, yeah, it's gotta be, it's gotta be higher powered or I don't think it's solar. Those are cheaper than the automatic meters that we have that we were purchasing. Those are three hundred and some dollars. These clip-ons are two hundred, so it's.
So our only challenge is if the meters are really old.
We have some options, but we don't need to worry about those radio reads right now. I just would like permission to explore the software because all the work we just did. To automate the system a little bit, that would be nice to have the software. We have to sign an FCC agreement, which Matt's gonna have to review. But it pretty much just says, we're not gonna pirate it, we're not gonna release it, we're not gonna use it past this quarter without signing a contract. Um, I'll give it to Matt if it's okay, and then next quarter we'll use it for automatic. When the guns, we'll shoot it, it'll be back here. They'll send us a tech person to come out, help us set everything up. And it'll be for one quarter to try.
And if it works, it'll be a lot less labor from.
Way less labor, I mean, it'll hopefully cut your reading down. So like it took me and Josh, and how long did it take? Yeah, so it took. Week and a half, yeah, so hopefully cut that. Wednesday or two, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I did the math on my, uh, water bill. Um, so I use like a hundred and nineteen thousand gallons and I've been there thirteen months. So my last bill was a lot higher than previous bills.
You're on a smart meter though, so.
I'm on a smart meter, but it still went up this, this quarter. And it was like, I don't know, I think I used fifty-five thousand and that's six hundred gallons a day. Which I'm not using six hundred gallons a day, but I could have been. But I did the math over the time and it was three hundred dollars or three hundred gallons a day. So it's probably about right.
Yeah.
So like I say, things are gonna average out. If you look at it, you might not have been paid in the first few months and then all of a sudden you got this higher bill. You know, if you add them all together and then you divide it, gives you the amount of gallons you've been using per day.
Mrs. Lucas, did you wanna, do you have more questions?
Yeah, that doesn't really sound like you have an answer. Gallons and then the next year was thirty-nine.
Our last quarter was forty, forty thousand gallons for this quarter.
So you're using six thousand gallons? You were using six?
About six thousand, two thousand, six thousand, six thousand and forty thousand.
So did they just get a new meter?
No, we haven't added a meter in a long time. Did someone, has someone physically read the meters at every place?
Were you from outside the house?
Yeah, I, I just did. I, I believe I saw you guys when I remember I, my wife and I, we read it. I sent that to you guys. Yeah, that was me that came and touched the pad when you guys were outside. I waved to you guys when you guys were up there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think that's possible that we use that water. Well, but if you're, you're going to figure this out and try to solve this, but what do we do about the water bill that we have at the moment? Cause it's due in a couple of weeks. You won't have a decision in a couple of weeks, correct?
No, we can make sure that any of the ones that we're looking at, we can not give them any penalties. That's an option for you guys to decide, um. Or hopefully we can just resolve it.
I mean, the estimator that probably did those readings might have made a mistake. You know, he must have been making a mistake. You know, we don't know, you know, I mean, but it is possible. So you probably were undercharged. Maybe during those parts. So now it's kind of building up to where the actual read was done.
It's been consistent for.
The whole time you've been there?
One year.
Discharge the minimum for this, this go around and then.
So, you know, if we can, if we hold that spot.
Oh, right, yeah.
But I'm just concerned about, um, what went wrong and what's going to be in the future.
The other thing I can do is, uh, when I did my reading at the beginning of September, um, so it's been a month. I can come up with the gun. Um, Tuesday, Tuesday I have another, uh, reading because we're checking.
Reading is similar to what it, uh.
What's on?
The number here, present reading.
Is it on the meter? Is that?
The inside one, because I can't see anything on the outside.
I was gonna suggest I can come up and shoot it again, just to see if there's any kind of leak or anything.
Right.
Just to make sure that there's nothing.
But I just have a concern about why, why, why did this? I mean, no one's read the meters in ten years?
We don't know. We, that, it could be a problem with the meter. There are ways, we used to have Mark test them. We'd give a meter, he would test them, see, and sometimes they'd go backwards. This is the case with that, but there are different things that we can see.
Is this an old meter?
I'd have to put eyes on it to tell you for sure. I'm not sure.
Did it have the, the thumb down the outside or did you drive by?
No, it's an old meter.
Well, let's replace the meter to start.
I can replace it with a smart meter, yeah, we can do that.
So let's start with that. Um, do you mind paying the minimum for now? We're not gonna charge anything, late fees or any of that, and that's, we're gonna figure it out and we'll go from there.
Two hundred and ten.
Two hundred and ten, okay. So I can do that and then you can just.
We're gonna figure it out.
So, going back to the safety miles, um. What is it?
I was just saying, if you charge them the minimum, then if it's just that other people are having the same problem, you're gonna, they're all gonna expect.
We're not waving anything, we're just saying so that we just move forward and figure it out. And we'll still have to deal with it, but so they don't have to leave you. Cause otherwise, or we just won't charge them anything until we figure it out.
Put that aside and figure out how, what, what we're gonna do.
Ideally, you'll, I understand what you're saying.
Motion on the.
Is it more?
Problematic.
Yeah, you, you need a motion for pointing the action, what you're gonna do.
Okay, so let's, let's, uh, approve a motion while we're investigating to charge the minimum. We're not waving anything, we're just charging the minimum until we figure out what happened. I make a motion to say that, so that Melanie can do that. Yeah, so, so. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so a motion, and you side say it. Yeah, and then all in favor, I guess we say all in favor. Mrs. Lucas, do you want me to come check?
I think that something happens, something's wrong. So yeah, if you could come and check, that would be, see if the meter's working properly, that should be good.
Do that.
So, okay, why don't you check and then bring the meter and replace it?
I got some luck.
Okay. Yeah, no kidding.
Okay.
Um, the next one is there's a memorial parade on Sunday at four o'clock, four-thirty. Um, we, um, we became aware of the fact that the parade was happening and. NASP has stepped forward to help this happen and, um. There were a lot of things that were already planned as a planner. There were a lot of things that were already planned, but the planner wasn't used to planning, I guess is the way how to put it. And so we had the police coming, we had the fire company coming and a list of people that were coming, including. Greater Rochester, um, Monty Hayrye and things like that for the kids. Um, the step off is at five, five o'clock PM. They'll be lining up in front of the fire hall and back to the church. And you're all welcome to come, I believe there's donuts and. Uh, cider.
Cider.
And NASP is sponsoring that, correct?
Not full sponsorship, everybody's involved.
Yeah, so. This is something like this, do we have, we don't have to have a motion or anything, it's just more for information or do we? So, um, everybody's got the itinerary that's going around. Because it came in and made that up and everything's set there. Um, the fire department grant, um, Sharon's been ordering a late, she got a grant and we're gonna let her talk about it.
Well, if I give you guys a clinical report, how's that, because many of you may not know. The fire department got a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, one more.
So Lori, it was nice not to sign a voucher, well, purchase order the other day for. Ten sets of turnout gear for forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents as far as the, the grant. Um. The fourteen all-band portable radios have been purchased. Um, received by the fire department and the reimbursement documentation is sent to the state. We got a check for a hundred and fourteen thousand, four thirty-five and eighty-six cents, uh, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. So. The turnout gear now has been ordered and. A vendor has to, um, do a fitting, kinda like a fashion show, yeah. So they're trying to, um, get an appointment with the fire department guys to come down and fit out. Ten of them and new turnout gear, so this is a, a completely reimbursable grant. It's just that you have to cough up the money first. And the village did do that the first time around, the radios, and we had pretty prompt payment from the state, so I'm not overly concerned about. The forty-five thousand dollar order for turnout here, this is a great thing for the fire department. Their radios were twenty years old, affordable radios, and their turnout gear is now, I believe, eight years old and according to. Their sta- uh, national standards, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be more than ten years old before it starts, it's already starting to break down. So we were one of very few villages in New York State that got this money.
And I just wanted to say that I was, when I was signing that forty-five thousand dollars, I said, Sharon, you sure we're getting this back, right? Um, and I wanted the board to know that I had done that, so, um, and why, and, um. That is a regular thing, uh, I, this is awesome, so this is great. So thank you very much, Sharon, and thanks for a nice presentation, um. Adding microphones to the boardroom, we've had several people complain that are on Zoom that they can't hear the board speaking. And that sort of thing, um, and so. We had that discussion probably a year or two ago with Dave. And, um, we had talked about doing it and I guess we researched it and we never acted on it. Um, it's not horribly expensive, Kevin, can you report a little?
You bought that sort of accent, you bought that, but the problem with that and the wall behind that. Is if somebody in the back room, like if Fred Lynn Obvious was talking right now, it'll pick up on him. The acoustics in here are portable, what, uh, Lori asked me to look into was either something that's expandable, meaning. It's gonna be like able to grab just right here or microphones in front, um, Whit actually brought up a good point.
There are other devices, let's, let's talk, there are other devices.
So we're not in a hurry, but like. Yeah, Adam's gonna come in next week, late next week, Adam's our IT person, um, so when he does, Whit's gonna come in. Lori kinda set a budget limit, I think he said not to exceed two.
Yeah, I, I didn't think it should be more than that, I, I think that we should, we may be able to get it for less than that at this point.
It depends on what we get.
Yeah, and I'll see if Adam, if we're gonna get rid of that, either if it can go to the fire department, uh, they have an equally acoustic. Room, but yeah, Lori, if they can go to the fire department or if it can be repurposed, I don't know if Scott wants to buy it from us. Yeah, um, but we'll see what we can do with that, um, yeah, I'll have you work with Adam and I for it.
Okay, great. Hire, hiring a ground penetrating leak detection and that's you, Kevin.
Yeah, so that was when we flushed, um, I had to do progression flow on Margarita Road for a couple hydrants. Um, Margaret rode at the top of the hill right after Phil's property kicked thirty-four pounds of pressure, which is. Right, the bare minimum for legal, and we went down the hill towards Crenzers, that was sixty pounds. So we went backwards to try and figure out what was going on, the one in front of, um, Cook Properties was thirty-four pounds, ready bare minimum for pressure. When we turned it off, there was air behind it, you could hear it, it's a pretty good tell sign for a leak. Um, so the guys, we tried to surmise where it could be, the issue we have is that there's a ten-inch main. That runs under the Cook Properties through the woods and then to the, um, the tower. There is no hydrants, no nothing on that line, so finding that is gonna be almost impossible. Uh, so this company, they can provide ground penetrating radar, they can find a leak exactly where it is. And they can do the whole village, they can do just a day's worth of work. You can kind of set up a plan, a route, and then I just, or someone has to go with them. Um, the rate right now is, what was it, twenty? Twenty-four fifty, um, that's cuz they're mobilized out of, uh, Buffalo. If they get done with their project in Buffalo, the rate goes up to three thousand dollars, so they won't be mobilized anymore.
Do we know how long we have to, to charge?
Did not know how long that project's gonna take, so I don't know if it's gonna be a month long, don't know.
The others I was gonna ask you, those ones, can we wait for?
I'm not sure, it's, I can probably push them off if I get them like set up and then have John be kind of the lead on it, I don't know. I also need to know if we are interested, there's another issue on South Shore that we're not sure if it's a water leak or, or what it is. So we need to figure out, we tested it and it did show all right, so we know that there's some issue there, I just can't.
But we don't know if it's sewer or water.
We know that doesn't, right now, we're pretty sure it's not sewer, we're just not sure where it's starting from, and we're listening to the hydrants, we just don't know where it's coming from.
Did you guys check the pressure across from Michael?
Across from your place, I did not.
Cause I got thirty pounds.
Coming to the house?
Yeah, and I knew, thirty pounds, so I had to buy a pressure.
I didn't put a valve on.
So, I mean, you guys. Still, or I mean, we handle pressure down low.
Yeah, we know why Scott's pressure is low, but with yours, we don't.
You can come look at it.
I can put the, the gauge on. No, on the hydrant.
So for us to do this, we have to approve.
I need to know. I need to know how many days, or if you even want me to do it.
I, I think we got bad pressures here, so that's where that extension was gonna help, right? And that's where it should.
Have any bad pressure, your pressure shouldn't be.
Okay, let's, let's not argue with the pressure, the question just is, do we wanna spend a day? Or two days, there's one day we'll get most of the stuff you've done.
I'm gonna have Dustin and Phil set me up a route of what they think we need to do.
Okay.
And then from there, as much as we can get done in a day, so I at least know I need South Shore, I need that, and then if there's anywhere else, like.
Well, I think we should find that ten-inch pipe that's going from the.
Yeah, that's, that's where we're sure there's a leak somewhere.
Okay, so let's hit that, let's start with a day, and worst case, they'll come back for three grand. So if we don't find everything, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I.
Well, then we might have to clear that woods to get them back there, right?
It looked like at some point when we went back there, at some point somebody took all the big stuff out, so the easement is somewhat cleared. We might have to do some, we'll try and get back there.
Yeah, it's pretty tight, it's pretty.
Yeah.
It's been said that there's been a leak, a phantom leak between water tower and Margarita Road for a decade. Now, but I know, I think if we, frankly, accurately still available, it's in South Shore. You know, I've never been able to find it, so.
I mean, don't you think we'd find the hole out there by now, I mean.
So let's just do one day.
Okay.
And plan it for where we suspect it really is, and worst case, we can make a, on, can we make an on-the-fly decision to keep another day?
All you could do would like not to exceed, so you could do a motion not to exceed a certain cost.
Why don't we, so two days would be six grand or worse?
And then Kevin, just make the decision at the end of the first day.
Five grand, yeah.
So why don't we do that, why don't we say we're gonna exceed five grand, and then get them to come for a day, and if we think we need them another day, we do the second step.
Is that a motion?
I make that motion.
All in favor? Okay, um. The census software for auto reading, you kinda went over it earlier.
Yeah, we talked about it earlier.
Yeah, let's do more investigation for.
Okay. At the end of your board packet, there's a, a thing up from Brandon Martin, we had docs again and he asked. If we would be interested in putting some at, um, a couple of different places, I guess they're in good shape, I haven't been down to look at them. Because I figured we should decide whether we were interested in doing this or not. Um, Kevin, you wanna talk about this a little bit or?
Uh, great, it's just the ones that he replaced, um.
And we looked at them then and they were in pretty good shape.
Yeah, my only fear, I mean, the exception thing, I never got a straight answer and then we gave up on it, so I just have to circle back on it. There's an exception for us for municipality water dependent uses. I just don't want us to get into something where we put four in one location, four in another location, then OGS tries to say. Now you have a marina over your whole bay, and we have to get land underwater lease, so I'm, I didn't circle back on it, cuz at the time we gave up on it, if. You're gonna re-explore it, I just have to go back to OGS.
We don't have a lot of time.
When does you gotta know?
Next week, if he is, there's also a cost, if he's going to put them in, it would be ten thousand dollars. And, um, that's.
So where would they be number one?
He was talking earlier, it was talked about for Wickham Boulevard and. Which. Yeah.
But you're getting approval from some guy. Huh? We gotta get approval from some guy to do that, some guy.
They, is there interest, I know that public has been interested in these, um, is there an interesting goal further that the concern is kind of the end of the year? At my part, um, on the same token, I don't wanna be the one that stands in the way of possibly having public docs, so. Um, this is up to you folks, Brandon said he would have something drawn up a little more formal if. Uh, we wanted it to go to planning board or something like that.
How far past can you find out where we can total?
At the mercy of OGS, I mean, if I call him and. What do you think, Matt, with real OGS?
I mean, they've been pretty prompt the last couple times we've had to talk to them, so.
Where I'm with them, where they go.
They don't like to give a straight answer though, so that might be the harder part.
I just don't wanna pin the village in getting a land underwater lease, cuz that's.
When we had a head of ramp, they get them to the shore, off of the back.
Land underwater is not a big deal.
Now, where, where would it be, at the end of the redaway in Wickham?
Yeah, I think that's where they were talking, I'm not sure exactly where. That was, um, what was being discussed before, and then off to the sky, um.
So like opposite third street, is that where you're thinking?
Blowing concrete, if I remember it, they're concrete and steel, the old Arnie's docks, they used to be over there.
Yeah.
So, and I was older, do they have to be removed every year?
I think they're, the way Brandon would install them, they're permanent once they're in there. They're not, they're not coming, yeah, that's why he doesn't wanna.
There's really enough. And when you see the Margarita Dock, I'm kinda familiar with that one. That's pretty busy, so they, if they had other places to tie up boats while they went and got their vehicles and things like that, they're certainly used for. Um, with the driveway, or Wickham would be a good place for restaurant use and that sort of thing. Um. But, or the beach.
So, what are, which one is for, is that true?
You have the exception sheet from two seventy, I mean, it says. Their number two is water dependent use for five or fewer boats up to thirty feet in length.
So if we're above this, we gotta go in. Phil's saying that's not that bad to get.
I am only telling you my experience, I mean, if Phil has different experience, he.
I'm just wondering, I put the process.
Dude, we, we don't have, we have to give him an answer, he can wait a little longer.
I, I don't know.
Being pressured by these.
Yeah, for, they're even right now, he's moving, was that what they're saying?
They're, they're on the other side of the bay, but they're being pressured.
Oak Park was being pressured, the, the D E C said that they're in a lot of language, I find somewhat amusing because the whole bay is kind of full of.
Okay, Kevin, is it like a determination to need the whole bay letting out?
The whole bay is a collective.
So do we wanna pursue it or do we wanna let it?
Well, I'm sure Kevin will go ahead and then if the. Do you want to do a special meeting or something?
Okay, is there enough interest for that?
I'd have to aggressively remind Warren.
Yeah, if we're gonna put it on his property.
Uh, well, I'm sure if you want to. Does that mean we're gonna own it? Trying to give it to you numerous times. I'll throw in a light.
So.
And I offered before, we end up doing something, I will donate services to pull the spuds and then if they're gonna float them out of something safer place.
Okay.
So anything I can do with the green to help the village, I will.
I would say, you would think there'd be some place we could still put them for a month without.
Well, you can put them on my place, I don't care.
Kevin, is there a problem, leave storing them on the, cuz they gotta be in the water, right, we're not. We're not putting them on a trailer and taking them somewhere.
So if they're on the water, the D E C's just been following them around. I don't know because he's.
They looked real nice when they were leaving.
Threatened, arrested when they're in the first place and then we moved them elsewhere, but they got threatened, so they're slowly following around the bay.
Can you throw them off the water?
That's a branding question, cuz I think the way he said it, they come out the roping.
We can't take them all anyways.
Yeah.
Why can't we just issue ourselves a warrant permit because we have it, our document warrant, luckily, if some are not connected to the shore, we should be able to store. Fire at each location without connecting the game play, issue ourselves a warrant permit till we sort out the, uh, the underwater lease with the OGS.
What, what does the winner do if they freeze?
Okay, well, we're not gonna stand by it this way.
Okay, let's move on.
Call for a committee for that or something and.
Yeah, let's, let's have Kevin investigate, I mean, I think that makes the most sense and then. And then, um, if we have to do a quick meeting, we do a quick meeting.
Okay. Alrighty, is there any other business?
I'm wondering if we can have at the end of this a quick, um, executive.
I think that's a good idea. I guess the next thing we need to do then is pay the bills. We have, uh, who painted a claims ten through one. To ten thirty-six, total of seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven, twenty-nine. The general fund is thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and five cent. The water fund is twenty thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents, and the wastewater fund. Fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five, eighteen.
Is. I make a motion, you pay the bills.
Sorry, I understand. Sorry, I'm sorry.
In favor? And uh next board meeting, regular board meeting will be November twentieth at six thirty. Is there a motion to go to a second session and I would like to have Scott here if that's.
Posed acquisition of property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I second.
Favor?
Hi. Hi, and then should we have an hour and Kevin here or?
We don't need to.
Do we want them to even be part of that, just so they don't have to worry about? That they can accuse them.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, so now it's, yeah, why don't you?